I would ask for any declaration of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, we move forward. We have delegations, and I understand Kevin McNabb will be...
Morning, Warden and County Council. It's my pleasure to introduce you today to three of our Gray County paramedics, Mike LaRocque, Dean Hill, and Jody McGinnis. Also with them is our operations manager, Jeff Adams, and our quality assurance manager, Jason Hunter. Late last year, Mike and Jody were recognized for their 20 years of service and received their exemplary service medal at a conference at the OAPC. And Dean Hill, he wasn't able to make it, but each year now for 30- and 40-year recipients are recognized in Toronto at the provincial legislature, and so we just want to recognize them here this morning. Just a bit of background on the exemplary service medal. As a part of the Canadian Honors Program, the Governor General makes available exemplary service medals for EMS professionals. The award was created in 1994 and is available to eligible members of the prehospital emergency medical services who have served for at least 20 years in a notorious manner. It recognizes those professionals who have performed their duties in an exemplary manner characterized by the highest of standards in good conduct, industry, and efficiency. To qualify, at least 10 of these years of service must be at street-level duty involving potential risks to the paramedic. So Mike LaRocque, he works out of Owen Sound base. He's been there as long as I can remember, I think probably most of your career. He started in 1996. He's a big member of our health and safety. He's our health and safety co-chair. Jody, she works out of Hanover. I think you've pretty much been there since the start, too, and you started in November, April, November of 1996. November 1996, and so she's been in Hanover pretty much her whole career, too, full-time. And Jody, she's on health and safety, and she's on our peer support team now, too, offering help to the paramedics. And Dean, he's one of the youngest ones here. Yeah. He's recognized for 30 years of service. Actually, Dean helped teach me back when I first was in co-op, and then also I did my co-op placement in Hanover when I was in high school. And also when I was in college, I did my placement there as well. So it's always been great to work with Dean. And Mike and Jody and Dean, it's been such a pleasure to work with you. Deliver excellent patient care every day. You're always stepping up to help us when we need help, and we really appreciate your efforts, and just want to congratulate you on your awards.
So I just want to offer my congratulations and say I've had the opportunity. I've started doing a bit of a tour. I've had an opportunity to tour some of the paramedic bases, and we've been having some pretty bad weather. I often think during those weather events that you folks are out there. When the rest of us are hunkering down and cuddling up, maybe watching some Netflix, you're out there. So we thank you for your service, and we do think about you on those cold and difficult days. Thank you again. All right. Where are we now?
Item number four.
Okay. Yeah, so we're looking now at items that may require separate discussion. Does anyone have any items that need to be pulled? Counselor Desai.
Item 5A.
5A? Anyone else? And I'm looking for a motion, I suppose, for all the other items, someone to move that we receive or adopt. All the other items in item 5. Counselor Kivony and Counselor Clumpus. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That's carried. Moving on to item number 6A. Rob Hatton. Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee appointments. I need a motion to get this item on the table. Counselor Burley moves, seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I'm in front of you this morning to recommend six public members be appointed to the Gray County Joint Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. Members of this committee, they serve a four-year term aligning with the term of council. Under the Ontarians with Disabilities Act, membership must consist of at least 50% plus one persons living with disabilities. And under our own committee terms of reference, up to six public members may be appointed, as well as one member of County Council, who is Counselor Burley. Recruitment began for the 2019-2022 term last fall. We did have four members of our committee interested in returning for another term: Andrew Edgecombe, Catherine Schultz, Christina Schnell, and David Mollison. It's staff's recommendation to reappoint all four of these members. They are experienced with Ontario's accessibility laws. They're passionate advocates for persons with disabilities, and they will provide strong oversight as we begin to implement Gray County's multi-year plan, which was a plan that they did help develop. And I think they'll be a really good resource as some of the participating local municipalities are looking to develop their own plans in the coming years. Staff are also recommending the appointment of two new public members to the committee. Claudia Strellick applied for the committee last fall. In an interview with Claudia, she showed very strong passion for accessibility. I think she'll bring a new perspective to the committee from both her personal experience and her experience in serving other people with disabilities. And staff also recommend the appointment of Andy Underwood. I think some of you probably know Andy. He is the Executive Director of Home and Community Support Services. Andy spent several years on Owen Sound's Accessibility Advisory Committee in the past, and he's made some very positive contributions to improving accessibility in the community of Owen Sound. So those are the six members that I'm recommending this morning. I think they'll be strong leaders, especially as we begin running a joint advisory committee for the first time. So that is my recommendation to council.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions? Discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, Rob. Next, we have Kevin. Item 6B, dealing with response times. Ask for a mover to get the item on the table. Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Milne. Kevin?
Good morning, Warden, County Council. I also wanted to introduce you to Joel Meyer. He works in the GS department. He helps me with the information you actually see on your desktops. You'll see response times for your areas, also for the county. And also, he's going to do a bit of a demonstration that we're looking at around population and how it reflects against and distances against where our bases are and how we can realistically make some of these response times. This report this morning is what we have to do each year to report on 2018's response times. As well, last year, I went and we did a report on the last 10 years of call volumes. And just to give you an idea where we're at and how they've been increasing, and also to take a look at response times and to show you how we've been working to maintain them and improve them. So just because there's been such a change over in council this year, we decided we'd do it again. So hopefully you'll find this interesting, and you'll be able to get some information about your municipality and also the county as a whole. So our paramedic service, we're continuing looking for continuous improvement in our response times. And really, we set response time targets that I would say are fairly aggressive because where we do determine them in C Task 2 to C Task 5, we set them at the 90th percentile, which is really, it is hard to meet because really you only have 10% of those calls that can be over that percentile. This report will give you an analysis of the 2018 response time, but also give you a look back again to the last 10 years, and also our response times from that time as well. So each year, we come with a report, it'd be in the summer, to talk about the next year's response time targets. And we generally keep the same targets. We've never, ever increased them. We've actually improved on them once, but we've never, ever set a lower target. And then each year, March 31st, we have to report on those response times. Our data is always at least one month behind, so by the time we get the information from the ambulance dispatch record system, which we call ADRS, it takes us this amount of time to be able to compile all that information. These response times and the plan that we have were really determined back in 2012 when this new legislation was in place. At one time before that was what they called the 1996 percentile. So what they did is for all Code 4 emergency calls in 1996, they took that time, which was 15 minutes and 54 seconds. And you had to meet that time up until 2012, and that's how we measured our response times, was just at that time. What we would do is compile all the Code 4s, and whatever the 90th percent call was, that's your time. But it's changed a bit. It's a little bit different now that we look at C Task levels, but the level of acuity of patients. So an important measurement of how paramedic service is performing is indicating that we match the time that we get there, especially in those calls in the C Task 1 and the sudden cardiac arrest, and then also some C Task 2 calls, too, that are really, as far as strokes and heart attacks and those type of things, the quicker that we can get to you and care for you and then get you to the hospital. And now it's not all about just what hospital. It's the most appropriate hospital, like you see with what is happening with stroke care. And also if we're outside of the area and we're near a cath lab, that we could go there as well, as far as if we could take somebody having a heart attack to the appropriate facility. We also are working on a bypass agreement for OBS obstetrics, that we take them to obstetric hospitals. So it's now more about taking them to the appropriate hospital, not just to the closest to merge. The response time itself is measured from the time the call is received. So when the pager goes off, or the phone rings, or the radio goes, those are really the three ways the dispatch gets a hold of us. That's when the time starts ticking until the time we arrive at the scene. So what we talk about there, we build in what we call a shoot time, and our policy is you have to respond within less than two minutes. But typically, our response to get the call and get in the vehicle and figure out where you're going is one minute. And then from there, that time, though, is actually built into the total response time. So when we give you a time, you have to think about the crews in the base that get the call, they have to get in the truck, find out where they're going, and then drive to where they're going to drive to. As far as a percentile response time, when you think about that, if you had 1,000 calls, 900 calls would have to be under the 15-minute target to reach that. So really, they only take one time for a percentile response time. So a 60th percentile, if you had 1,000 calls, 600 calls would have to be under that, versus an average where you actually take all the calls. And you take the number of calls, but the amount of time, generally, we do it in seconds, and then you divide it out. A percentile response time gives you a more accurate as a commitment of how long we can get there, because we have lots of calls that we respond to in, you know, three, four, five, sometimes six, seven minutes. But it doesn't really tell the whole story about when we face these calls in our area where we have such a big geography, how long it takes us to get there. So on the screen here, you can see our response times for 2018, and they're similar to where they've been for the last five years. We are under, though, in our sudden cardiac arrest category. We set that at 40%, and we're 38.24. For C Task 1, we meet that criteria. That's where the person is being resuscitated, so we have to offer ventilatory support, or they're severely low blood pressure, be like a major trauma situation. These are our most critical and most chance of dying. We're there in eight minutes or less, 61.21%, and our target was 60. C Task 2 is really what we call our emergent calls, and that would be somebody having a heart attack, stroke, you know, head injury, those type of things, but they're conscious and we're not actively resuscitating them. This one here is really the bulk of our Code 4 emergency calls returned in that high acuity stage, and we're 89.39. And we've been roughly around this area, as you can see, over the last five years, 89.68. That's kind of been our average, and so we are slightly under there. And then the C Task 3, 4, and 5, we set at 20 minutes, and at the 90th percentile, you can see there that there were 96, 96.9, 97.16. We're well within the targets of there. So like I said, for the C Task 2 and sudden cardiac arrest call types, we're under there. It's the third year in a row for C Task 2 and the second year in a row for cardiac arrest, but we're just right there. We're not too far under, but we continually try to monitor and change and improve our response. It's something that's ongoing. In 2015, we also looked at our response time targets, and we used to have it at 50% for C Task 1, but because we're performing over and above, we moved that target that we'd said we'd get there 60% of the time in eight minutes or less. So we do look at that, and we do try to make improvements where we can, and we've been able to sustain that since we made that move. And then also at that time, we used to be at 30 minutes for C Task 3 to 5, and we reduced that to 20 minutes, 90% of the time. So we do have challenges in rural Ontario. Our biggest problem is area. It's not that we're not busy in doing calls, but I think about where I used to work in Toronto. I believe Toronto's about 630 square kilometers, and they have 100 to 110 ambulances on. And so their issue there is sometimes volume. I remember sitting in the northwest, only ambulance in the northwest quadrant of Toronto. But typically, there's lots of ambulances, but lots of calls. In our area, one station area is probably the size of Toronto, and that's what we have to really try to fit that in and cover those areas off. So we really figure, we have volume issues, but our biggest problem is our geography, is the size of the county trying to keep that covered. When you're on the road, it's, you know, not that you don't care about the call that just happened, because you have to be aware of that, but it's the next call that happens that I, if I was a supervisor on the road, is what do I have for coverage to get me to that next call so that that person doesn't delay the response? So for us, it's really a low population density and a large geography that we have to deal with. So Joel's actually going to work with us here. He has his computer. He's just going to show you some of the maps and how he looks at where we are positioned, and I find this stuff really exciting to watch. Joel and I, we just really started working together in the last year, but we'd like to really spend more time working in this area and try to identify areas where we're not meeting and where those C Task exceptions are, and to look at where we position vehicles and stuff like that. So anyways, I'll let Joel take over for here.
Morning. Give me a second here. Hopefully, everything goes as planned. So you have a copy of this, I believe, all in front of you. I've added on some population density heat maps as well to the one I have in front of me. So obviously, this is the Owen Sound area. Kevin's asked me to speak towards the data and how it's compiled and kind of what's going on in each of the maps. So you'll notice that you have a yellow area that I can turn on or off here, kind of show you where it is. This is, first one here is the SCA, so the sudden cardiac arrest zone. What it does is it basically, from the paramedic facility, it calculates a drive time along the roads, following the rules of the roads, so oneways, speed limits, all that, and assumes the maximum amount of time you're allowed or you're able to travel. So lights and sirens might be a little bit different, but we can't always estimate. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have. So as you can see here, it does cover most of the population within Owen Sound under an SCA response area. I do take into account the one-minute shoot time, as Kevin was saying. So it might be a five-minute response time, but we actually only have four minutes of driving time here. As you extend out, so we go to the C Task 1 area, you'll notice it's obviously much larger. Not significantly larger, but large enough to cover, again, most of Owen Sound. We can zoom out to the entire county. You can see that the new Chatsworth base really helps the coverage area just below Owen Sound there. You can see the population. This is derived from impact data, so it's not as accurate as the census data. It is, again, derived, so it's not unusually accurate, but it does try to take into account all renters and owners to see where they are in comparison to where our coverage is. As I do go out to the C Task 2 areas, again, much larger areas. You can see a lot of the Owen Sound and Chatsworth now overlapping a little bit, so with Owen Sound being one of the busier stations, that overlap helps them keep their coverage up. Start zooming over towards Bogner. If I go into the C Task 3 to 5, you will notice that there are what appears to be gaps. These aren't actually gaps, however, in some of these areas. Basically, there's just not enough roads here to provide a full coverage. So it does cover all the roads within there. It is a little misleading in the fact that there is potential to assume that it doesn't cover everything there, but it's just because the roads don't close in fully, that the polygons themselves don't close in. So there is coverage to all the roads within that area. You can see as you come out a little bit further, though, there are areas that aren't as covered as in some areas there. So I was told to keep it short and keep going, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Just to let you know, there's nothing wrong with short. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks for the report. The mapping's very interesting. The C Task 2 response mapping that we've got, did you take into consideration like the Chesley bases and the Mount Forest bases? Because they will go into, you know, Gray County also, so that would make the map, fill in the map more. So is that available?
Yep. We do have that. I don't know if I have it right on this computer, but we have looked into that when we do our overall analysis. The map that was provided to you is purely of the Gray County paramedic bases. If you'd like a updated one.
But just for County Council's benefit, we do have agreements with our neighboring counties, right, for service into our area?
Yeah. So code 4 responses, it's considered a seamless system. So what they do, even on the border, within five kilometers, they'll check, even if it switches to another dispatch system, like with Cambridge, which is now in Hamilton on the south, and Georgian on the east. It's even more seamless on the west because we were dispatched by the same London CAC on the west in Bruce County, but it is, all Code 4 calls are shared.
Thank you.
So speaking a little to the left, this next slide that's up here. So this is basically taking the data that you see in the map that I showed you. So the population overlaid with the different response areas and figuring out the amount of population within those areas and outside of those areas. So if you looked and you saw the SCA response area, the formative drive time, and you took all the population within that drive time and compared it against the population that was out, so approximately 32% of the population lives within the SCA response area. That goes up quite a bit higher once you get to the C Task 2 and 5 response areas, which are almost 90% of the population. So it really goes to what Kevin says, that our issue isn't necessarily enough vehicles. It's definitely the area and the size of the county that makes it more difficult.
So just Counselor Milne?
Mr. Warden, just to go back to that, and tied into Counselor McKay's question, how much of our population would be covered, you know, from outside our paramedic service? You know, you said 90% of the population is covered approximately by the, I forget the acronym now, but if we included, if we included the outside server to the surrounding services, how much of our population would be covered? I think it would be higher, would it not?
Yeah, it would be.
It might even be 100, I don't know.
It's funny, because last year, we actually showed that, but it would actually, it could really cluttered up, congested the map somewhat, so we're trying to break that down a bit for you for where you are, but we can get that for you and show you that information, because we do have that information. We do look at that, so.
Counselor Larry?
Kevin, the response time performance under provider, how does the community defibrillator relate to the time it takes for the ambulance?
So I should explain that maybe. So that one there is not all about ambulance response. It can be any defibrillator. So if a public access defibrillator is on site, so if it happens at an arena, the time is zero, so that actually really helps us improve our response time. If a fire department gets there ahead of us, then we can use their time. So if Ayton, for example, if they do a call, if they get there within four or five minutes, and it takes us nine or 10 from Hanover, that we can actually use that time. So those type of things, that does come into play. The sudden cardiac arrest is the time. You don't even have to shock. It's about the time that a defibrillator arrives, whether it's through fire, public, or paramedic.
Questions? Kevin, I have one. So when somebody makes a call to 911, what is the time between that call and the call getting to the appropriate paramedic service dispatch?
I don't have the numbers right off, but you can actually get those online for each dispatch center. But I would say it takes one to two minutes for them to get the call. It goes to 911, and then it goes to the ambulance, they call the hook flash to the dispatch center, and then they verify your address. If it's on a landline, it's quicker because you get the ante alley drop, that automatic address comes up on the screen. Cell phones take a little bit longer. I think one thing in the end is to remember is if anybody asks us, because sometimes we get questions about how long and how much, how many questions that the communicator asks the person, and people think that the ambulance isn't on the way. As soon as they confirm they need an ambulance and they know they have an accurate hit on the address, that's the big thing, is to get that hit, to know that they know where they are for sure, that they're sending the right resource. The ambulance has started, so we may not even know what the call is. We know there's an emergency happening, and then we start heading that way, and then on the route, we would get more of an update. So I would say one to two minutes.
So is that one to two minutes incorporated in our response time or not? Just from the time that we receive?
No. It's from the time our pager goes off, so we have to get in the truck, and then, so there is that time as well. And if they have trouble finding you, it could take three or four minutes, depends upon, like if a cell phone and doesn't have a right hit, you don't know where you are, those type of things.
Right. You were telling me, what percentage of 911 calls are now by cellphone?
75%. That's anecdotal that we heard from when they moved the Cambridge to CAC to Hamilton, they told us, because they didn't have the ante alley service for a while, that it's not uncommon for a dispatch center to work through, you know, trying to gather that address, because they have to realize, rely on the person where they are to know where they are. Coordinates are good, but they're not always 100% accurate.
Good. Any other questions?
There's still some more, unless...
Oh, you've got, oh, Counselor McQueen, though, has a question.
I'll wait.
Okay.
One thing that we want to do is just break it down by municipality. And you can see, we've provided the County of Gray response time, then we break it down by municipality. And when we report to the province, it is really that first screen, but this is really for your information only, to see, you know, as far as, or it's public information, too, but it's your information, just to give you an idea how we do in each individual municipality. So you can see in these areas where they don't have a big center where they measure against, like in Chatsworth and Georgian Bluffs and Gray Highlands, those percentiles for C Task 1 and SCA are lower. But if you look at where we just measured, the town of Hanover and the city of Owen Sound in those small areas, you can see how we respond in those smaller areas where that population is to hit those calls. The further they are out in geography where they happen, they're harder to get to. And then in the C Task 2 category, a lot of them meet the response time criteria, like Blue Mountains, Georgian Bluffs, Hanover, Meaford, Owen Sound, and then Southgate, West Gray, they're in the 80s. And then you can see consistently where Gray Highlands and Chatsworth have been lower, but we hope to, we're anticipating with the new Chatsworth base that will improve And then if there's any further enhancements or expansions, it'd be something that we'd look into Gray Highlands, because that's, and you can even see on Joel's map, there is a portion there. There's lots of it, there's rock face and cliff, but there is an open area in that southeast corner. is an open area in that southeast corner. So just a bit about our increase in call volume. Over the past ten years, our code threes have been increasing six point six percent, and code fours, four point nine. In 2012, when we developed these response times, our total emergency calls were ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-four. At that time, though, we're doing twenty-seven hundred and twenty-six non-emergency transfers. Since that time, we worked with the hospitals and long-term care, we've more or less came out of the business of non-emergency calls. We don't not do them, we do roughly about three hundred, three hundred and fifty a year, but we're focusing on our emergency calls now. And so when we, when we developed the response times, though, that's what the call volume was. In 2018, the call volume was eleven thousand seven forty-three, and we've actually now exceeded the number of calls where we were when we developed these response times. Last year alone was a seven point three five percent increase in calls, and over the past three years, we've seen almost twenty-five percent increase in our call volume. So with that surpassing where we were, when we developed the response time standards in 2012, it's something that we've got to keep an eye on about as far as adding resources, you know, hopefully not, but potentially a change in service delivery and targets. But again, we'll keep working with what we're doing, trying to keep, you know, maintaining the response times, and we're doing adjustments continually, looking at them, and hopefully be able to keep our response times in check. So this just gives you an idea of the call volumes over the last ten years, and you can see they've been steadily increasing. In 2009, it was seventeen thousand nine seventy-two, and in 2018, it was twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-six. That includes all calls, including standbys.
Counselor Suever has a question now.
Does that count pocket dials? Because that's one area that we've noted, particularly with the police calls in the town of Blue Mountains, that people's cell phones call 911, and how do we deal with those?
For us to be, count this as a call, we'd have to be assigned the call. We don't have to go arrival, we call 10-7 at the scene, but we have to be assigned the call. So I would think that, unless somebody, like, typically, if there's nobody there, that's the first, the first level of 911, the SERB, that would take that call, that I doubt we'd even see it as an ambulance call.
Okay.
Really, what we see for, for the, for the false calls are the home alarms, where alarm will go off and they can't reach somebody. We don't get a lot of them, but we do, if somebody leaves, they trip their alarm, and nobody's there, so we do have some of those, but typically, it's not a cellphone mistake.
Okay. Yeah, because we've had problems with that, with police calls, because police do respond.
Yeah, so the police have to respond, you know, they have to follow up if there's no response, and that's different than us, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor McQueen, did you want to ask your question now, or do you want to wait till the end?
It's up to you.
No, I was just going to speak to, with regards to the area that is absent from service-wise, and I know that you and I have had that conversation, and I know that there's an area here, I'm looking at your map, this is response times three to five, you had it up on the screen, but there's a big area there that, not only for the, for the residents of that area, around Fever Sham area, where that's a deficient area, but also that area, there's a lot of movement of people, especially hitting Blue Mountains, or, as I just explained to you, there just a little while ago, where there was a number of people that were stranded in Hanover, or like that. So I see that, that whole area that's, that's under service is going to continue to have more and more people floating through or...
Or hitting in that direction, and I know that...
I think on a given weekend, 124 has over forty-five hundred cars per day coming up, like on the weekend, I know when they did that transportation study a few years back, some of those numbers were very high, transient, which are all heading to the Blue Mountains on the, on the seasonal or the transient side. So I guess, Mr. Warden, I will look at maybe adding a separate motion to this, or an amendment to this motion at the end.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea about...
One second, Counselor Potter.
Yes, do you have any statistics on where, is this growth in call volume happening right across the county, or are there pockets where it's happening? And secondly, do you know the reason why it's, why it's growing so much?
I don't, I do have a different, in 2017 to 2018, as far as like the increases, I've seen the increase of eleven percent in Owen Sound, and then everywhere else has been anywhere, Hanover really didn't have much of an increase, it was point nine three. These, these are stations, Meaford Station, seven point eight four, Markdale, four point one nine, Dundalk, four point six four, Craig Leith was up eight percent, the Blue Mountain space. And typically, I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but when you hear people talk about it, I think as far as the aging population, as far as call volumes going up, I think that there're people, there's people living in their homes, they're being cared for in their homes, and less people being cared for in the hospital. It's almost switched, the number of people used to be cared for in the hospital, it's almost exactly the number of being cared for in their home now, versus who are being cared for in. So I think there's sicker people in the community, people living longer, with more complex diseases, and even just more greater awareness of 911, you know, people to call 911 if they're having a heart attack, and if they're having a stroke, you know, if they're having an opiate overdose, there's more awareness for people to call.
I think, given that response, really begs us paying attention to the prevention side of things. Counselor Kivney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kevin, a question, if I may, in relation to the fire department. How is it determined whether the fire department accompanies you? I know that they are often called in case there's a lift required, but I just wondered if you could share with us how that determination is made.
So we have tiered response agreements with the fire departments in, in all of Gray, and really, we give our best opinion on what calls that they should go to, and we, we consider what we call the obvious immediate threats, so that would be unconscious, choking, cardiac arrest, car accidents, farm industrial accidents. So we have agreements for those. Some fire departments have all of that, some, one goes to just car accidents. The paramedics always, always have the ability to call for the fire department if it's an emergency. We call it the fuel fire extrication, so if there was those type of things, if it's a large patient, or if they're, you know, trapped in a, in a car, or a piece of machinery, or if there's just a lift that's required. We don't do it very often, now that we have our stair chairs and our power loads and power, power stretchers, there's less often we need to call for help, but we still need to call for fire departments. This one here is just total patient carrying calls, and really, it just shows that if you look at 2012, the call volume then was ten thousand nine thirty-four, and where we are, are now at eleven thousand seven forty-three in 2018. It's just a contrast where, when we developed the response time standards, and we've met that now, and we're, we're actually above it slightly. So it just, we do have to pay attention to that. A bit of a historical analysis, I'll move along here, sorry. But just to, when we took over the, 2004, the county, there was twelve ambulances on shift, Monday to Friday, nine ambulances on weekends, and five ambulances on nights. The reason for all these ambulances, three of them were pretty much signed, non-emergency calls, transfers out of the county, where they'd be gone for six to seven hours, taking people to the city and back, and waiting for them down there. But at that time, our response time was seventeen minutes, and we needed to do different, do business differently to get that response time down. That's back to that ambulance act for code fours. So we instituted minimum emergency coverage, we started to restrict the number of ambulances that were available, and then from there, come up with a better deployment, so if a vehicle gets assigned to call in a community that we'd cover off halfway, or try to move a vehicle into that community. And again, just reducing our ability to do non-emergency calls and focusing on emergency calls. We have added resources over the years, in 2011, because of busy weekends in the Blue Mountains, we've added weekend coverage, which really helps us. In 2013, when we really started transitioning on emergency calls, we took a day ambulance on that was on Monday to Friday, and we used those resources for nights, we went to six ambulances on nights. And then in 2015, that was in Dundalk, and then 2015, we took another day ambulance off and put it on nights. About us to have seven ambulances on nights. And in January this year, again, back to trying to work with this area, we used the, one of our last eight, the last eight-hour day car, we put it on, our peak time from nine to nine, where we, it's a first response car, and they're out there trying to stop the clock. And so, so through this, we've been able to maintain our emergency response time roughly around that fifteen-minute mark, and if anything, we've actually decreased it since 2004, with a significant number of code four, increase in code four calls. So this slide just gives you an idea of where the code four calls have went up. So the, our ninetieth percentile, that nineteen ninety-six standard, which was fifteen fifty-four and seventeen minutes when we took over, since 2009, we've held it around that fifteen-minute mark, fifteen minutes and thirteen seconds last year, and fifteen fourteen. I always find it good to go back in history and look to see where we've been, and making sure that we are maintaining what we, we were doing before, and hopefully still trying to improve it. And also, it just shows here what the average is, so our average response time is seven minutes and twenty-two seconds. So you can see the difference when you look at an average, it sounds a lot better, but it really doesn't tell the truth of how, how well we do, but it does give you something to compare to. As far as addressing the, this problem, the government has made some changes. One is new medical dispatch center, and it's really, it's, it's a system to better prioritize calls, they call it MPDS, and so they were supposed to have that in place last year, but it's still, I'm not sure if it's the change in government or what's happened, but it's been delayed, but eventually it'll go across the province. So that will have a better triage tools to triage calls for us, and with the hope that down the road, is that if you call for an ambulance, that there may, you may not always get an ambulance, you may get a community paramedic, you may get told to go to your doctor's office, there's better ways of triaging, because we just can't keep sending people ambulances, and we can't keep taking people to the hospital, there's better options for them out there. And also, the changes to the ambulance act that happened last December, where allows the paramedics, the, the standards haven't been written yet, but at least the act has changed now, the paramedics can, will have alternate destinations. By law, before, we had to take people to the hospital. The, the business is changing, we're going to be, be prepared to move ahead with that, where we will send, you know, alternate resources, like a single paramedic that'll help work some of these people through and work these issues through, connect them to community resources, like LYN home care, mental health and addictions, 211 for socio and economic support. And what, that's one thing we're going to do with that first responder, is we're going to have them start to look at some of those high frequent callers, and to get them connected to community resources. For staffing considerations, our community paramedic is out at Chatsworth at, right now, and so they book on at seven in the morning, and end at seven at night, they're there five days a week. We do use, though, that paramedic for first response, too, for coverage, during most times when they're not in the community doing calls, so they are able to help protect it in the Chatsworth area. And we are talking with the LYN where we'd like to increase that service to seven days a week, and potentially move to other areas of the county as well. And just under our legal and legislative requirements, the response time standards fall under the Regulation 257 Part Eight, and our responsibility is an upper-tier response, upper-tier responsibility is to ensure patient care, transport carried out in accordance with legislations and standards, and it's also, we're to provide supervision to staff, maintenance of vehicles, equipment, and provision of quality assurance program, and we will be tested on that this year. Every three years, we have a service review, so this October, we will go through that again. We've always been very successful through that, and we look forward to the government coming here.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Looks like we're all question out. Thank you very much. I'll call the question in. Oh, sorry. Counselor McQueen.
Mr. Warden, I either would like to add a separate motion, or add an amendment to this motion, I'm not sure which, which you prefer, it's about the business with this.
Depends on the nature of the motion, could we...
It's sort of, it's talked about in the, in the, in the report, it was sort of to do with regards to what I brought up a few minutes ago. I can read it, and then you can decide. Okay.
It may be a notice of motion, this is something that has to be submitted provincially to the ministry, so...
Okay. Well, I was, wow, okay, but there could be an amendment to the motion, or in addition to them. Seeing the overall response times for paramedic services in Gray Highlands are consistence, consistently lower than the other lower-tier municipalities in the County of Gray, therefore, an initial meeting be set up with Gray County, Gray Highlands staff, and elected officials to consider future enhancements when our next system improvements occur. How would you address that? It's not talking about any directions, just setting up a meeting.
Yes, I would agree. I, I think that is a notice of motion, and I will work with you to prepare that for the next meeting, and then what we'll do is bring, bring back a staff report outlining sort of what you're looking for.
Very much, thank you.
Okay, then. On the main motion, then, call the question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 6C, climate change action matter. Scott, oh, I thought it was Scott coming up on this. Counselor Burley moves, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Scott's away, so I'm going to present this report on his behalf.
Okay.
So the purpose of this report is to make a committee aware of a partnership project with University of Guelph master's students regarding climate change. During the recolor Gray process, we heard a number of comments that climate change mitigation is important to both residents and employers. We have put forward a project proposal to the University of Guelph master's students, and a group of students selected our project to work on, which we're very excited about. The students will be working on a report that makes recommendations to the county to provide what we're calling actionable and affordable steps that the county can take to help combat climate change. The study process will include research on what other county municipalities are doing to combat climate change, working towards overall greenhouse gas reduction and climate change preparedness. They'll also review existing legislation or policies that should be considered, and they'll also be doing a survey of select Gray County staff and municipal staff to get their thoughts on what policies and operational improvements that could be considered as part of the plan. The report would outline high-level recommendations to develop a climate change action plan. We anticipate that some of the items that will be identified will be things that we are already working on, or will be implementing in the near future, things like paved shoulders, rural transit, existing official plan policies, LED lighting in our, in our buildings. This report may include recommendations on further official plan policies, zoning provisions, or design standards and best practices. For example, this could include best practices regarding stormwater design or ecological offsetting. Infrastructure standards or upgrades with the aim of creating more resiliency is also something that I think will come out of this study, things like paved shoulders and stormwater facilities, as well as other considerations such as building improvements and vehicle requirements. Given the time constraints, county staff see this student project as a first step towards creating a climate change strategy. Following the completion of the student project, we'll have a better idea in terms of what are the next steps in terms of completing the overall climate change action plan later this year. We've been very fortunate to partner with University of Guelph, University of Rural Planning and Development Program. In fact, we partnered with them on three studies, and we've incorporated the results of those studies in the new official plan. These projects have been done at no cost. A similar study to this would cost, on average, between twenty-five to thirty-five thousand if done by a consultant. Following the completion of the project, we will have a better understanding of those next steps, and we'll, of course, bring back the findings of that study to council once that project has been completed. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Counselor McQueen?
I'll take you further. Mr. Warden, county councillor, and... Thank you very much for the report. I know that the State of the Woods Association meeting was just held last week, one of the engineering companies was showing a stormwater management pond that was under a parking lot. So I don't know if anybody else saw that, they were sort of, they created the spot, they created the area for the water, and then they, they created all the above stuff, but there was still a reservoir for the water to get away. So I thought that's sort of one way of, of looking at, because what happens when we, when it rains a lot, and you talk about paved shoulders, but when you get more and more pavement, the water's got to go somewhere else.
Exactly.
I guess the other thing, too, is, is what do you call the type of porous concrete, or porous surfaces for parking areas, where it can sort of percolate through, and I think that's probably another opportunity for, I guess the ground can take some, because when you pave it over, it becomes a surface that just runs everything. I know, you've probably seen it at different times in Toronto and Peterborough, a long time ago, where we get those three or four inches of rain in an hour.
Yeah.
It's got to go somewhere, and I think some of the things, and I know stormwater management ideas are a whole lot, those volumes of water, before we started building everything, Mr. Warden, in this province, they were called swamps, swamps, where those, also those areas that pulling back water, and certainly wetlands and all that kind of stuff, got away from those areas, so, you know, sort of, we're, we're a hot topic, if they're in those areas that have a lot of dirt, like, in the court.
Yeah, great. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. I often think about, uh, rain barrels. I, I was on a kick about rain barrels, uh, with the, she's smiling, with the town hand over for a number of years, but, uh, strikes me as a, a, a very good way of, of holding off, uh, uh, that water for a period of time so that it can slowly be released back in instead of this big surge. But anyways, I, I, I'll get off the rain barrel.
Good ideas, for sure.
Um, we're ready for the vote, I suppose. I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, Randy. I think you're up on the next, aren't you?
I am, yes.
Yes. Endangered Species Act. I'm looking for a mover. Moved by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor, um, Clumpus. Thank you.
Thank you. So the purpose of this report is to provide an overview of a discussion paper that's been released by the province, uh, which is basically a ten-year review of the Ontario's Endangered Species Act. The province is asking for comments back by March fourth. Uh, we've reviewed the discussion paper and we've had some discussions with local municipalities and conservation authorities. And we've provided some comments and some suggested process improvements, uh, related to endangered species. The province is interested in hearing ideas in four areas of focus being landscape approaches, the listing process and protections for species at risk, species recovery policies and habitat regulations, and what's called the authorization processes. Through recolor gray consultations, staff and council heard two messages quite clearly. County residents and visitors value a healthy natural environment, which includes biodiversity of species, and the protections of Gray's natural areas should be shared and not unduly restricted on any one landowner or sector, example, farmers. At the county and provincial levels, a balance between species and habitat protection and development ability is, is required. From a county perspective, endangered species and habitat protection comes up, uh, usually through the development process or when we're doing building and infrastructure upgrades and replacements. For example, replacing a county bridge where red site Dace habitat exists. I'm sure Pat can share a bunch of stories with respect to that one. There are provisions in the county official plan which speak to the protection of natural areas along with endangered species and their habitats. Provincial policy statement also contains similar policies. However, the Endangered Species Act goes beyond these policies. Uh, it's at legislative requirements, uh, for the protection of endangered species and their habitats, and that applies to all Ontarians. So we've broken down our comments into those four focus areas. Just highlight some of those comments, uh, with respect to what we're recommending in terms of process improvements. With respect to the landscape approach, we see merit in a hybrid of, of both what's called case-by-case type protections as well as landscape-based approaches. So landscape-based approach is looking at a larger area, uh, whereas case-by-case type protections is looking at specific subject lands related to one specific species. However, we deferred, uh, what is most scientifically defensible at the end of the day. Taking a landscape approach may work provided sensitivities to certain species and their habitats are not compromised in the process. Case-by-case or s- or specific species protection may work where species habitat is, is unique. So we think there's a balance there in terms of when to use case-by-case versus landscape approaches. Species protection and habitat regulations should consider the impact on public and private interests. For example, municipalities have invested significant amounts of, of money providing and maintaining infrastructure. There are some cases where replacement of that infrastructure or installing new infrastructure in some cases may need to occur within the habitat of endangered and threatened species. Um, transportation staff have noted that this adds uncertainty, uh, around both costs and timing of a project and has done that in some cases in projects in the past. One of the key goals and identified in the Economic Development Strategic Plan is to have what we call shovel-ready, um, lands to attract new growth. As new species and habitats are added, it makes it more challenging to truly have shovel-ready lands. Protection should consider the impact on service delivery and growth areas where infrastructure investments have already made. So for example, within our settlement areas where we have roads, where we have water and sewer services already in place, or gas, or fiber, whatever it might be, um, that should be considered when looking at this, uh, endangered s- species protection and habitat. Similarly, the impact on any given sector should also be considered in these protections. For example, when a grassland bird species is listed, and this, uh, often, um, overlaps with, uh, regular farm practices, then considerations should take in account the operations of, of such sectors. We're not suggesting that a pass should be given, uh, on species protection for these examples. We're just suggesting that the protection consider the impacts on municipal operations and the operations of individual sectors. Um, get, again, getting back to that more balanced approach. The second area of focus is listing process and protections for species at risk. Uh, we sympathize with the challenge faced by the province as it relates to when a new species is listed and making people aware of these new requirements. We've struggled with this as well in the past when we're trying to inform people about new policy changes. Um, in this case, uh, it's the province trying to make people aware of the species protection and identification. From a public and municipal perspective, the majority of the public, including county staff, we don't have the scientific background, uh, to contribute to those science-based level discussions, which is really at the core of when these, um, habitat regulations and these listings come out. So we recommend that some form of transition provisions be considered when new species and habitat are identified, as this may assist in reducing the impact on individual landowners, developers, or municipalities. We also recommend more education on endangered and threatened species by the province across individual counties and regions, cause it varies in terms of what endangered and threatened species exist in Gray County versus say what's down in GTA, for example. We also, um, support planning concepts such as infill development, increased density and adaptive reuse. Should be primarily encouraged over new greenfield development. Using these concepts may provide benefit to, uh, species protection, but also achieve economic and municipal objectives such as affordable housing, especially when we're talking about second units and increasing density, for example. The third area of focus, species recovery policies and habitat regulations. So under the legislation, when a new species is listed, general habitat of that species is protected automatically. And what that is, is the habitat the species depend on for its life processes is automatically protected. There are timeframes that the province must deliver on when new species are listed and they must monitor over a period of time. The habitat regulation is later issued to replace this general habitat protection, which provides that more detail, um, about what should be protected. Staff see merit in extending some of these timeframes, uh, that the province is currently under in order to allow for some flexibility and to also allow for better data to be generated. Uh, in some cases, the five-year monitoring period, we think is just too short to adequately track the progress on species recovery. From a planning perspective, there is some benefit to having detailed habitats defined as it gives that certainty to landowners, planners and municipalities on exactly what needs to be protected versus that general habitat protection. For example, to simply note that, uh, certain species lives in a certain type of forest, it may be difficult to determine how much area to protect when that species is found on that property. A possible solution may be to group detailed habitat regulations for similar species that rely on that habitat. One of the key challenges faced by landowners, developers and municipalities can be the lack of data on species occurrences. In some cases, the data doesn't exist, or in some cases it's restricted because of data sensitivity for fear of lack of poaching, uh, and, and harvesting those, those species. The province currently maintains what's called the Natural Heritage Information Center database. It's a great tool for accessing public data, uh, on endangered and threatened species. We see great benefit to maintaining and improving this database, uh, both from a data collection standpoint and from a data access. Greater coordination at all levels of government and conservation authorities could help ensure, uh, the best data that's available. As an example, we provide in the report, um, we have environmental impact studies are submitted with certain types of development applications. And this includes some good detailed data that, uh, if done by a qualified individual could be, um, um, put in the Natural Heritage Information Center database to help provide further information about, um, species and their habitat. We also recommend the province develop further guidelines about, uh, the relevancy of species data. One of the challenges is that, um, some records in the Natural Her- um, Heritage Information Center databases, some of the data is very old, um, over fifty years old in some cases in terms of species citing. Um, so we would like to see, um, you know, some of that information may be, um, looked at further in terms of whether or not it's still relevant. In speaking with Gray Solvo Conservation Authority staff, um, they note species are not necessarily newly endangered, but rather newly listed. And, and there is a rating system for, for what's called the rarity of species and their habitats. It would again help if there was a transition period for each species based on that rarity rating. For example, if a new species listed is show, starting to show some decline, maybe a transition period could be considered for that particular species versus a species that is, is more rare or in major decline, maybe it's more immediate protection that's required for that species. So it's again, trying to get more of a balanced approach. The fourth area of focus, authorization processes. This is where we see the greatest, um, potential for improvement, um, in, in the, uh, processes. Uh, clearly defining the process behind such transitions or exemptions is crucial to, to their success. So within Gray County, there are some local exams, examples of where authorizations have been granted for development or infrastructure projects for endangered and threatened species. Uh, for example, in some settlement areas, development has been authorized to remove healthy butternut trees, uh, in exchange for replanning trees elsewhere at a two-to-one, uh, ratio. In working through these authorization processes, it's not always been clear when in the process that authorization is granted. Or how one demonstrates that they can be eligible for that authorization. In many cases, one of the key eligibility criteria is avoidance. Um, in theory, this makes perfect sense, but in practice, what does the test of avoidance actually mean? So staff have faced issues where, with respect to how and when an authorization gets issued. For example, developers, biologists may note that they will be applying for an authorization to the province to remove or relocate a species or habitat. And at some point, county staff have determined whether a development application is consistent with provincial policy statement or not. If we're certain that provincial staff will issue the authorization to remove or relocate that habitat, um, or s- if we're uncertain of that, sorry, then it becomes difficult to conclude that development is consistent with the PPS. However, in the past, provincial staff have noted that they are reluctant to issue authorization if they believe that the development may be refused for other reasons. So what happens is the developer gets caught in the middle of all this. Um, and, uh, because, uh, once, one government agency is not willing to issue the authorization and one is, is still not being able to determine if it's consistent with provincial policy statement. So we recommend clear guidelines on when authorizations are issued, who's eligible, and the process for receiving them would greatly assist in this, uh, this area. Municipal staff have also noted that when permissions change or new permitting processes are implemented, it's crucial for provincial staff to have that training, uh, before it's rolled out. Um, so that way we can have those discussions and questions with provincial staff, uh, and that they're aware of that new permitting, uh, permit process. We also recommend clear regulations on when ecological offsetting can be considered. And we also recommend that the province broadly consult on this discussion paper, uh, including consultation with municipalities, conservation authorities, indigenous peoples, landowners, conservation authorities, farmers and the development industry, which could, uh, require extending the comment periods. The, right now it's, uh, for a forty-five day comment period. Um, we suggest maybe that could be extended and have, uh, maybe some public meetings and some workshops, uh, to truly dig into some of these, uh, recommended process improvements. We'll of course continue to monitor, uh, this Endangered Species Act, uh, review and keep council aware of any changes that, uh, the province is recommending. Happy to take any questions.
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The comment of saying that developers sometimes get caught in the middle is an understatement, if there ever was one. My question is, you talked earlier, uh, the first, uh, of the four there, you said, uh, you're recommending in some instances, case-by-case, uh, you know, consideration. How do you keep that from looking arbitrary to developers? Because what I think is a case-by-case is a slam dunk for somebody else and, and that is the real frustration of some developers, or probably all developers, is, is how do you make sure this is very process-driven and it's not to the, uh, whim of a planner or some pointy-headed in short pants sitting in Toronto that, you know, we're gonna stop this or let it go ahead? You know, that, that's the real frustration.
It is.
I haven't got an answer, but I'm looking to you to provide some context and how we can find that evidence in this folks in Toronto.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think there's two areas. One, it points back to, I think, our recommendations on that for, the fourth area of focus is having those clear guidelines, um, and that training piece. Uh, what we find is that, uh, in, a new species is listed, um, and, uh, in some cases, regulations are rolled out, but the training is not provided in terms of what authorization process is required, um, or, or can be considered. And, and with that, then it's informing municipalities, conservation authorities and developers and landowners what that authorization process looks like and, and how can you become eligible, uh, for, for those exemptions, uh, is really what the authorization process is. Um, so with that, I think that's, to me, clear guidelines and training and awareness are the three key things that, that we think could help greatly, uh, improve some of the existing processes that, around endangered species.
Counselor McQueen?
County Council and, uh, Randy. Um, thank you very much for the report. I, uh, sit on the task force for the Conservation Authorities through AMAL. And we did have a review of this, uh, um, certain review of this legislation just a week and a half ago. I didn't have your report at the time, or I could have maybe used it. Uh, just from that, I would suggest if you could forward that to Kathy Brown at AMAL.
Yep.
Comments? Uh, some of the discussion that we had had was, one was, it's a ten-year anniversary. Are the particular species still endangered or what has changed? An update there.
Yep.
Uh, there was a conversation with some of the ones on the task force where, uh, going to Counselor Millen where, where people, uh, developers would be doing something and all of a sudden a turtle will show up. Right? Or, or, or maybe a salamander. So the problem is, is, is it works both ways, cause people, uh, legislation can tie up people for over two years just when that stuff happens, right? We had a conversation with regards to, you know, maybe a, you know, initial checklist or something that sort of, you know, sort of puts you, like, a developer comes forward. Because what seems to happen is it ties up developers, you know, for a long time. And if they know upfront what they have to do, it's, it's, it sort of changes as you go through and it's, it's really, it really affects, uh, uh, projects and stuff moving forward. Also, there was conversations around the idea of parkland. So if a developer was doing something, maybe a section of the area would be yet dedicated for that particular species. And I think you talked a little bit about that.
Yeah.
So, you know, like, uh, the thing is, is as long as there's, everybody knows the rules of the game, then everybody can play by their rules. But if they keep moving as you go along, that again has, has sort of came back as, as a problem. Also, as we, is some of the other conversations that we had, you get into the southern Ontario more around the GTA or, or, you know, well, there's probably no habitat saved. Where you get into northern or even Gray County or whatever, we have ample areas of habitat that, or areas of habitat that are, are, you know, it's already there. So the percentages change too and that sort of thing. So, you know, maybe there's, you know, in the sense of, you, you can understand that certain areas around those higher urban densi- urban areas or density areas, there is a concern of, of, of those endangered species because there's just not the habitat there like there used to be. So those are some of the comments that we had talked about. So certainly if you can forward that, uh, report to Kathy Brown, I think that would be very good.
Yeah, for sure.
She's got to do a report from AMAL to the government, and as you quite well know, is AMAL's, you know, pretty much tied with the MOU through the province, so.
Sure, definitely. Yep, I can do that for sure.
Counselor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Randy, for that very good report. That's a lot of work and coming from the mining industry, we've had a lot to do with endangered species and probably the one endangered species is the mining company. But anyway, the, um, so I think the importance is making sure there's enough resourcing and accurate maps and, and clear definitions, as, as you pointed out, and having clear processes. Because the biggest problems arise when there are no clear processes and maps. I've had grizzly bear habitat show up in an exploration area all of a sudden and it's one kilometer by one kilometer and that's not enough for one grizzly bear. So, um, anyway, so, you know, having clear rules and definitions, so things can... So, anyway, so, you know, having clear rules and definitions so things can't pop up all of a sudden like a blending's turtle in the development, that'd be a great way to stop one is just put one there because those are, you know, kind of sacrosanct. So I think just having good mapping of all the areas, and oftentimes, when legislation is updated, there isn't the proper resourcing for that. So I think that's another area that's of concern.
Sure. Thank you for listening.
Counselor McQueen?
That was also the other comment that came back, that M and R, the resource part from M and R is getting worse. It's less and less. So if you're talking about mapping and stuff like that, they're just, and maybe that's a separate comment to the province is, if you're looking at them, who's doing the mapping, right? So if they're not doing that, so.
We're fortunate, we're in this area, we have two key contacts, but they're used by a lot of people. And I know they're very busy because they get a lot of calls about this process because it's not clear for folks, right? So I know they're used quite often. And so, yeah, additional resources and that additional training piece when new things, new species get listed is critical. Totally agree.
Counselor Gamble?
Warden, Council, and Randy, very good report. The one thing that I've, I know it's a simple issue, but on severances, it always is in there. There may be an endangered species. Why is that not part of the planner's report?
Yeah. So this is one area of challenge in terms of, because there could be habitat, and it goes back to Counselor Soever's comments in terms of, there's not a, there's not very good mapping or data in order to determine, is there habitat there or is there not? So there's always the caveat that, well, habitat could exist. It's, and at the end of the day, like, in terms of, goes back to Counselor McQueen's comments in terms of, there's not enough resources at M and RF to identify, to look at every severance, for example. Because at the end of the day, it defaults to M and RF to truly say, yes, there is habitat here, yes, or no, there's not in terms of particular endangered and threatened species. They're the, that's their main authority, right? So there's always the caveat there in terms of consents that there could be. We don't, at this stage, require environmental impact studies on all severances. That's why we're suggesting that, you know, still having Conservation Authorities review is a bit of a plug, in terms of natural heritage review is key because they at least have some of that expertise and can be able to provide it. But like I said, at the end of the day, that solely rests with M and RF in terms of determining if there is endangered threatened species and habitat on those properties. So I don't think I answered your question very good, but it's because it's not an easy one to answer. And again, it goes back to some of the recommendations we're suggesting here, having some better data, better mapping, better training, clear guidelines would really help when we're having these discussions that, whether it's consent level, plan of subdivisions, pits and quarries, whatever we're dealing with, at least then it provides more certainty in the process. Because there's a lot of uncertainty right now.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, opposed? That's carried. I'm going to suggest we take a short recess. Bring us back to business. We're dealing now with item six E. Pat, I believe you're on. Looking for a motion to put the item on the table from Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Desai. DeHoy?
Mr. Warden, I'm going to be talking about T R C W B Old Street dash 19, which was the Badros Drainage Study. At the request of Gray Highlands, it was included in our CWF application where we did three drainage studies, one for Katie, one for 30, and one for the Badros area. So I'm just going to be following through the report here, and I will have some highlights from the consultant report that was commissioned in 2017. So there's the site location. Radiant Badros, 309, kind of turns a corner, then Road 63 is there. So I'll kind of zoom in here just a little bit. So Badros kind of, it lies in a...
It lies in quite a low area. And so there's a lot of drainage, over 400 acres, that sort of drain in towards the intersection in Badros. So a pretty long history of seasonal flooding issues, spring melt, and that type of thing. So we had put it out as a study at the request of Gray Highlands. Gray County itself, we don't have a lot of issues there with our property. Our property is quite, as you can see, you know, if this is a large, low-lying area, our property itself is quite limited. So we have two culverts in Badros. We have one at the southern end of town and one kind of on the east end. So the way the consultant kind of tackled the problem is, basically, they want to investigate if there was options for taking care of all the outlet from that, from those culverts. So they looked at the first one, which is the southern one here, just south of the intersection, 309 kind of goes around the corner here. Basically, they looked at the two ideas to try to take the runoff from the south culvert, a storm sewer that would take it to the east culvert, and then option two would be an open drain, like an open ditch behind kind of all the residences to take it to this culvert. That is kind of, that's pretty limited in the solution and what it solves. It takes some of the stuff away from that southern culvert, but once you get to this east culvert, that's where all the problems lie. There's no easy outlet to get from that east culvert to Prittle Creek. So this is turned on its side. So north is going to your left here. It's 1,300 meters basically from the intersection of Badros to Prittle Creek, which is the outlet, going this way. So this was the first option they looked at, which is basically running either an open ditch or a storm sewer of some sort right along the right-of-way on Gray County property. So that would drain the town of Badros, and it would all be following along for this kilometer plus. And I'll get in some prices later, but that basically is somewhere between $500 and $800,000 for that project. As you can see, a kilometer of storm sewer or an open ditch can be quite expensive. So another option was looked into, and they had talked to the local resident farmer here, Mr. Tupling, who's pretty agreeable to come up with a solution. He has lots of drainage problems as well as the residents of Badros. So it would be some sort of municipal drain through his property. Of course, his preference would not to have an open ditch because he'd be losing some, you know, some agricultural land. Obviously, it wouldn't be square anymore, so that's an issue. So that option is somewhere from $220,000 to $550,000. So there is no real cheap options here. The only one that is, that would really take care of some of the runoff would be a storm sewer or a storm pond, stormwater management pond. So that pond is, you know, two and a half acres somewhere in that neighborhood. The consultant recommended against it because it's taking up agricultural land, which nobody wants to do. The Conservation Authority isn't really for it because it's taking up agricultural land. Then you've got this large area of water just sitting there, which it kind of does around the town now anyway. It kind of infiltration is the only real outlet. So our fourth option that we explored was the do-nothing option. So the consultant didn't really fully recommend one or the other. But just to, staff has reviewed this report, and here we are on this sheet. This is all in the report that's in the link. It's very thorough. Again, GM Blue Plan did quite a nice job on it, but there is a lot of stuff to be read there. So, you know, these are the options. Option one, the large storm sewer or ditch running north. This is through Mr. Tupling's property. The stormwater management pond, which, you know, the price is quite reasonable, but it's just the downside of what you would lose as far as his agricultural production. And then our do-nothing option. So staff is recommending a do-nothing option because Gray's contribution to the runoff and our potential benefit is very limited. We don't really have any issues there. And because we don't have any issues, if, you know, if we suggest a municipal drain, petition the township to the municipality for a municipal drain, it almost feels like we're pushing people around. Because we don't really, we won't spend a lot of money on it, but the property owners will. So because we don't really have a huge concern about it, we realize the residents do, it just seems like we're forcing them to pay for this municipal drain. Because that's kind of the way it works. Once they figure out who has the benefit from it, who sacrifices, Mr. Tupling would probably get some compensation for giving up any sort of agricultural land if you went with that option. Gray County's contribution would be fairly limited, so. But some of those property owners who have significant issues, and most of you have found this who petition drains before, some of the residents really find it an exorbitant amount of money to get this amount of work done. And as you can see, all these options were quite expensive. So the costs would be divided up by residents, and that's kind of why we're avoiding that petitioning the municipality for a municipal drain. Now, that being said, if a resident or the municipality wanted to start a municipal drain, we would obviously be a participant because we are a property owner, we have culverts in town and that type of thing. So, but we are recommending right now, against moving forward, with the municipal drain petition.
Okay, questions? Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I wanted to propose a slight amendment to the motion that's been presented. As the report, as an attachment to the report shows, Gray Highlands Council had requested that the county hold a joint information session with the municipal staff in Badros. And so I wanted to add into the motion that in coordination with Gray Highlands staff, county staff hold a public information meeting in Badros area to give the public a chance to ask, or basically provide an update to the public.
Would this be a session that would, a meeting that would be held by the county or by the municipal? Jointly.
So through you, Mr. Warden. I'm assuming that our consultant would have to obviously be there to speak to this report since he is the expert in the area, so, right? Yeah.
Do you need a seconder for that, Mr. Warden? I'll second that and second the amendment, I guess.
It's moved and seconded. Now, do we have to vote on the amendment?
We have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. So discussion on the amendment, then. Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, the County Council. And I think it's important, this has been talked about for quite a few years, and I think it's very fortunate that we were able to have a consultant do the background work to not only show some options, but explain the dynamics of the situation. Certainly, I know I've had conversations with Mr. Tupling, and basically, to solve it, it's going to take money. So I think, as my deputy mayor has indicated, is an opportunity to have an information meeting to sort of, communication is very important because there's a lot of, you know, people just don't understand what that process is. And now we have a consultant that's gone through the process, did a background study, has done the information. I think it's sort of important that that can be conveyed to the community. That way, the community has a good understanding of the big picture. So I certainly would support that, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Quite frankly, I'm a little puzzled. Why wouldn't Gray Highlands have the meeting? Like, have at her. If the thing's been ongoing for years, why doesn't the township hold the public meeting? Invite the consultant and have the meeting? Why do we need the county there?
Counselor McQueen?
Because it was the county that initiated the study. So I would say the county, along with the consultant, along with us, would be there because the county road goes through it. It was the county that initiated the study. So I think it's only prudent that the people that were part of it be there. That's all. Because it is a county road system that goes through it. Yeah.
Other discussion? I guess we're ready to call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Keep your hands up. In favor? All those opposed? That's carried. And now on the main motion, which was simply to receive the report. All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. We need a mover and a seconder for the main motion as amended.
Oh, sorry. As, but we had, the main motion was already there.
So now we have...
We had a mover and a seconder on that. So now that it's been amended?
Yes, we have another full motion then, so.
Would it not just simply be the same mover and seconder?
It could be, if they choose to.
I'll second it.
Who was the original mover and seconder?
Counselor Carlton.
Counselor Carlton. Mover?
Yes.
And seconded?
Counselor Desai.
Are you still wishing to be a mover for the amended motion? And Counselor Desai, you'll be a seconder? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, then? Any opposed? A few, that's carried. All right. Have we got everybody that we need here for item six J? I think we do. So maybe we will jump to that. Item six J, dealing with the request to support enhanced fire communications project. Kim will be presenting that. We need to put it on the floor. Thank you for reminding me. I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Boddy, seconded by Counselor Mackey. Sorry, my head had already...
Good morning, Council. Mr. Warden?
Morning.
I will start this report by saying I find myself uniquely qualified to be speaking on this matter, so I will do it my best efforts. Some time ago, the nine fire departments operating in Gray Counties, Intertownship, Chatsworth, Owensound, Meaford, West Gray, Hanover, Dundalk, Gray Highlands, and Blue Mountains, approached the county asking for our assistance. As councils aware, accurate and proper communication between dispatch, the fire services, and other personnel on scene in any incidents is vital to the effective emergency response and necessary for the safety of first responders. During municipal emergencies or disasters, coordinated communication amongst responding emergency services, volunteer agencies, municipal departments, and municipal administration is necessary to ensure an effective deployment of resources where they are most needed. When we were approached by the fire chiefs group, we were made aware of some shortcomings in the communication infrastructure that's used by the fire departments. You may be aware that all fire departments in Gray County, with the exception of Hanover, which is dispatched by Tilsonburg, and the Blue Mountains, which is dispatched by Berry, are dispatched by the Owensound Police Service. Each fire vehicle working with Owensound Dispatch is equipped with an analog radio that picks up a signal on the Gray County Fire Radio Frequency, which is transmitted from the county-owned tower at Ceylon or the privately-owned Wackerton Tower. There are many other towers and pieces of infrastructure around the county under various ownership or lease arrangements. A safety issue that's been identified occurs when Gray County Fire Radio Frequency is overloaded due to being not only used for initial page-out or request response, but also as the on-scene incident command link to dispatch centers, which is generally used to request additional resources. This becomes a critical issue when on-scene fire personnel are communicating on the fire frequency and dispatch needs to tone out another station. What, when that happens, the tone-out overrides any other communication for a period as much as 45 seconds. So when there would be other potential communication on that same channel, for example, a Mayday call with a firefighter in a building, that call would not be heard if it happened at the same time that they were... Not all departments have this issue. Owensound, Blue Mountains, Intertownship have an additional fire-ground frequency that they can use to communicate on scene and avoid the dispatch conflict. But that department has to dedicate a person to monitor and record its communications as dispatch isn't able to do that for them. They would see, those three departments would see benefit to being able to use the Gray County Fire Frequency to page out additional staff without tying up their own existing radio systems. So not only do we lack a single channel that every... channel that everyone can use, and that, you know, beyond even fire proper, our current infrastructure as configured is not sufficient to provide adequate seamless coverage everywhere around the county at all times. As I mentioned, Gray County owns communications towers in Woodford and Ceylon, which support communications for our fire departments and county transportation services. Transportation operates on a different frequency from fire, and their radios have both digital and analog capability, which gives them additional coverage. Paramedic Services, who would also have an interest in being able to communicate seamlessly, operates on a different network that's more similar to a cell phone network. This is where things really start to get complicated. If the ultimate goal amongst all of our responders and county departments is interoperability and seamless communication between all responsible parties, then what needs to happen is to assess capabilities and potential remedies across the whole spectrum of communication. Some of you from previous councils might be aware that Bruce Power, with Huron, Gray, and Bruce Counties, with some federal funding, had started to look at a rural interoperability project to support, you know, any, if there were ever any issues at the Bruce. That project provided initial report, but it's our understanding that any remedies to that situation are perhaps as far as 10 years into the future. So that's a long time for us to wait. What can we do in the meantime to close the gap and keep the first responders safe? Just by way of a little bit of history, Gray County has a long history of support for fire and mutual aid. In 1976, the county invested about $32,000 or $131,000 in today's money in radio communication for the benefit of each of the fire brigades in the county. And in 2011, council passed Resolution FP 11511 that confirmed the county's responsibility to operate and maintain the equipment on the Ceylon Tower for the benefit of fire communications. The county has continued to invest in the maintenance of the towers and the communication equipment on them, and has a reserve fund for their eventual replacement. So you can see why fire approached us to have this conversation. The fire departments as a group have put significant effort into looking into the infrastructure and what improvements might be beneficial. What became apparent out of that work was that in order to fully realize the benefits of further investment, we needed to look at the whole picture: radio capabilities, communication protocols, available frequencies, and tower infrastructure. So, once we got to that point, it was really truly out of my league, and we needed. That's why I'm recommending that we bring someone in who has the significant experience with design and implementation to help guide us through conversation. Dan Pearlstein was recommended to us by some of the infrastructure providers that we worked with in the past. His CV was attached to the staff report, and you can see he has very extensive experience with some very sophisticated projects. He's passionate about this work, retired from Toronto Police, and consulting with municipalities, large and small, about how to address challenges like the ones we face. He's quoted us a very reasonable price and proposed the approach outlined in the report. Council reports at each, the conclusion of each phase, and looking for your support to move forward before we make any significant changes. He's been here once and met with all of us. Having someone with his breadth of experience on both the technical and process side, I think, would be invaluable, and that's why I'm recommending a single source on this. No one department, one fire department, I think, can solve the communication issues on their own. Industry Canada, we've been told Industry Canada is not, at the present time, issuing additional new frequency, so it's not like we could just go out and ask for more channels to work on. We need to work with what we have. The county can play a leadership and coordinating role here for everyone's benefit. We do have funds in the Connected County Reserve that would support at least the initial phase of the project, which I've said not to exceed $25,000. So that would get us a lay of the land and recommendations to consider about how best to move forward as a group. So that's kind of the gist of the report. You see, I have some wonderful folks here in the background that might be better able to answer any specific questions, but I'm happy to do my best.
Thank you for your report, counsel. Counselor Millen?
I'll move the recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded, yes?
I'll say this is an important thing, and I think we need to proceed with it. It's been an issue right from when I come on to county council in the early 2000s, and, you know, we stumble along, stumble along, and the good people at the back have been very patient, and I think we need to grab hold of this thing and fix it.
Kim, I'll get to your questions in just a quick second. Would it be appropriate to make some introductions? I see we have some visitors in the audience.
Gentlemen, and Suzanne. Thanks, Jeff. And at the back, from Owensound Police Emergency Dispatch?
Suzanne O'Monton, I'm the Communications.
Priscilla, Director of IC, Home and Public Services.
Thanks. These people have been so wonderful to work with, their time and expertise and their willingness to work together, because they all do come to this, come in and to this, so it's been great.
Is there anything that any of the visitors would like to add? I would invite you to... Is there anything that we should know in making this decision? Anything you want to add? Yeah?
To you, Mr. Chair, and members of council. The work that's being proposed here is a very critical step in improving the safety of firefighters and residents ultimately. This enhancement to the critical infrastructure is a first step to getting us to interoperability, certainly to giving the coverage that's required in the community. It's a win-win for everybody. Just wanted to share that.
Okay. Counselor Trumpus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks very much for your report. Kim, as you've heard, our Meaford Fire Chief has supported this initiative. I think it's a great way. Enhanced communication capability is always a very good thing when it comes to emergency responses and so on. Just one quick question. I'm just wondering, certainly in favor of the initiative as proposed, but I'm wondering if you can, or would anticipate any further financial contribution or expectations from the local chairs?
I think it's difficult to say exactly how this will all transpire, and that's why it's so important to have Mr. Pearlstein on side, because there are larger infrastructure investments that may be required, and it may be reasonable to anticipate that those would become to the county. You all have different radio systems and things with different capabilities. Whether any challenges can be addressed through simple reprogramming or by process changes that wouldn't necessarily cost anything, I think we'd be looking to those things first. But if there were going to be more investments in equipment at the individual departmental basis, I think that's what would be uncovered. Certainly, I think we want to try and minimize that, and that was really the power of everybody coming and working together, was that we could ensure that nobody was making an investment and potentially stranding that investment because it wasn't going to further the overall goal of having everybody be able to communicate seamlessly.
Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the presentation, Ms. Windgrove. Appreciate that. And I recognize the importance and the necessity, certainly, of improving this, the communication. It's critical. And I'm just wondering if there's any way to move up the timeline so that we can get on this and make it a priority and make it happen more quickly.
I provided the three-month window as sort of an initial assessment. I think we'll certainly be, you know, focusing on this. Mr. Pearlstein has, was very forthcoming in being, in his availability. He didn't indicate to me that there would be anything holding him up, so I think we'll try and move this forward as quickly as possible with your approval.
Counselor Soever?
Yes, I see the importance of this. However, our chief has said that, you know, our radio system works fine, and we use Berry, and he's also said, "We have stated we would not be interested in participating in any plan which would make it necessary to alter our current system or have us relinquish control of any of our communications infrastructure." And he says, goes on to say, "We believe the only benefit we would see is potentially some improved communications during mutual aid calls with other Gray Departments. Such calls are rare, and we have not had any real difficulties using the current system." So I think, you know, I think it is important for the county. So as a county councillor, I would vote for this initial study, but I just wanted to get our chief's comments on record.
I see that the chief is approaching.
Don, as a representative of the chief's group, has a...
What I would like to add, and again, what I hear here is priority, which I think is what we want to do. What I wanted to pass on, again, to all the people here, as the chiefs and our firefighters, the mutual aid that we are working, and everybody has boundaries, and I believe as a chief's group, we've gotten rid of those boundaries, okay? And everybody's trying to work together. Not one department can do everything for their own center. And we are doing every effort we can to share our resources, work together, and this is a very, very key piece to it. And it's a safety issue, and by moving down this road, it brings us all together as a group even tighter, and that's what we are working towards. And as the chiefs and our firefighters, there are no boundaries anymore. We're all working together.
Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. And I certainly, you know, support the chief's initiatives. Spent 18 years, just retired from the Chatsworth Fire Department in September, so I certainly know a little bit about the frustration being on a fire scene and hearing, you know, someone else's page go off right in the middle of a fire operation. So there certainly is a safety issue for, you know, all the volunteers and all the full-time firefighters that we have in Gray County. One thing I'd like to add, that, you know, we have automatic aid agreements now with Meaford and with Intertownship, so being connected to that other fire department is essential. I think automatic aid will likely be expanded out throughout Gray County because it's just the, what you need to do for a volunteer fire department. You can't get enough people on scene when you need them, so having automatic aid agreements is very important. So this initiative is important, and being able to link with EMS is also important, and that's a part that we should be thinking about. Thank you.
Any other questions? See, no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, and thank you for the visit. Okay, we'll turn back to item 6F. Gray Road 40. Mr. Hoy?
How do you?
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, yes. We will need a mover, thank you. Excellent. Counselor Potter, glad to have you on the...
Counsel Mackey.
Oh, Counsel Mackey, I didn't look that way. Counselor Mackey. Last time I looked this way, and I missed Counselor Robinson, and now, anyways. It's on the table, thank you.
Morning, Warden, council.
Good morning.
What I'm presenting here today is the first award road job that Gray County put out here this spring. We got permission last fall, winter, to go prior to budget to advertise this, which we did. So basically, what I'm doing is recommending award to Harold Sedlin Construction for a chunk of Gray Road 40 that we're doing this year. It's our biggest job that we are taking on this year, our biggest road job. And the award is for $4,194,077. Excuse me, $1,194,077. A lot of sevens there. That's a thing with the contractors, by the way. But anyways, lucky sevens. We have three bids on this project. It's a 15 and a half kilometer job. It's a very large, significant project. This, within this project is encompassed pretty much, one of the last portions of service treatment that we have within the county, so we're knocking that off. We have two other roads that do have service treatment on them, but this pretty much takes care of the worst of, the worst that we have left. The project, it came in under budget, which we're pretty thrilled to see. And that's a combination of pretty much going out early. We had a really good, tight, tender package. If y'all could see from what the bids were, we had Arnel Construction, EC King, and Harold Sedlin, and they're all very competitive and very close. And that is just, because everything was pinned down very straightforward, and it was clear and concise. The job has 32,000 tons of asphalt in it, so that makes up the majority of the cost of the project, quite honestly, or one of the biggest percentages. One of the reasons that, you know, not that being under budget is a bad thing, I'm glad we were, of course, but the asphalt prices last year, they skyrocketed towards the end of the season. The AC index, which is what we use in our projects, it's the asphalt cement that makes up the core ingredient in the asphalt, it went up by 15 or 20% from beginning of the year from bid time to the end of the year, and it's still up now at this time. But somehow, with this project, all the contractors came in quite competitive, and the asphalt ended up being pretty much in line with what it was last year as far as price goes. So that was a surprise to us, to say the least. We added 10% contingency to this project. That is basically to cover off any unknowns that we may have missed, which I'm sure there won't be very many, but it covers off mostly the cost bill that had been on the rise in the AC index, because we never really know what it's doing. It's very volatile. It goes up, goes down. So we're thinking that at least that'll give us some sort of buffer if it does go up. Now, to cover off if there's any questions with regards to the surplus that we have, I would just like to mention that our finance department, they pretty much put together the different mixture of funding that goes into these projects, and the majority of the funding is, not the majority, but I'm sorry, the majority of the surplus, like 40% of it is gas tax that we'll put back into reserve, and then another 35% or so is development charges, which are based on what the bid price comes in at. So if our bid price came in, say, $5 million, we'd be using more development charges towards that project. Being it came in low, the development charges that were allocated to that project, some of them go back into the, into the development charges reserved. Again, it's going to go, start in May. It's going to be pretty much an all-summer job. Like I say, it's fairly significant. We have nine and a half, nine and a half-meter platform of asphalt. Incorporated into that is our, what we've been trying to fit into all our projects, is a 1.25-meter fully paved shoulders. That covers off a safety buffer for us, gives us the white line, that added visibility, and also the rocks that covers off requirements for cyclists for a minimum weight. So that part of it is something we're trying to do on most of our projects, or exploit, exploit the platform as best we can to accommodate that anyways. And outside of that, that's generally it. Any questions?
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and a good report. I'm pleased to support the project, but as someone who's sat on this council before, I'm surprised that former Mayor Pringle is not in the back row. I'm just thrilled to see that there is no new bridges proposed for this project in the middle of a swamp, so good job.
Counselor Mackey?
Well, I'd just like to let Counselor Millen know, there's no request to extend 40 either through the swampland, so... But I do appreciate the work that Transportation has done. This road certainly is in bad need of repair. Just wondering if there's going to be any sightline improvements, whether any of the hills are, you're projecting knocking any of the hills down. And there's a couple spots that have dangerous groundways on them, so...
There is going to be some vertical correction. There's an area called Spring Hill, which is the water level in it, the groundwater level is very high, so it does affect the Roquan bit, so we're actually cutting it down slightly. slightly and putting in some lightweight fill, and that should improve the sightlines a little bit there. And there's a snow drifting area on a crest to the east of that, we're also cutting down to try to make visibility better, especially in the winter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See, none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much. You're on next, aren't you?
I am.
Yes. Okay, so I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Gamble. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is our report, TRCW oh-six dash nineteen. It specifically deals with structural inspections that we have done on our assets within the county. We have a hundred ninety-two bridges and culverts over three meters, and we're mandated by legislation to have fairly thorough inspections done on them on a biannual basis. So we've had a consultant on board since two thousand and thirteen, whose basic, the, the term of the contract has run out this year, or excuse me, they ran out as of December thirty-first of last year. So we need to get inspections done for the nineteen-twenty season. At the same time, we're looking at acquiring some new asset management software, and one of the major components of the asset management software is going to be integrating our structural inspections and our assets into the software to better give us an idea of trigger times for different maintenance procedures or replacements and whatnot. So what we're looking for with this report is, this Esperant Associates we've had, they're, we're looking at carrying them for the next two years, and what we're looking at ideally is that, that'll be able to help us translate the information into the new asset management software more streamlined. If we put out a new assignment, we're gonna have a tough time scoping exactly how we want the information presented so it'll fit into the asset management software. So we feel that by carrying them as a sole source for the budget, that that'll really help us significantly as far as getting the job done. And it kinda works out to, you know, in the overall scheme, they've done a great job for us, and it's kinda six of one, a half dozen of another. I don't see us ever getting a better price than what we have right now. We've contacted our neighboring municipalities, Simcoe and Bruce, and really what they're paying is probably a little bit higher than what we're paying at the moment for each one of our inspections, so we feel that there is, there is some savings there, and it'll, like I say, it'll help us to transition smoothly into the asset management software. So that's it in a nutshell.
Questions? I call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much. Anne Marie, you're up.
Good morning, County Council.
Look, just one second, I'm gonna put the item on the table.
Thank you.
Looking for a mover. Counselor Woodbury and Counselor Hutchinson, second. You're on.
Thank you. This report is to update the corporate directors for the Gray County and Owensound Housing Corporation. As, back in two thousand, as part of the provincial reform to social housing, social housing was downloaded from the province to the County of Gray. And at that time, rather than transferring legal ownership of the properties directly to Gray County, the province formed the Gray County and Owensound Housing Corporation. It was used as a mechanism to transfer ownership of the social housing assets. Gray County is the sole shareholder. The corporation doesn't act independently of the county in any way, and all reports come through council and staff then act on behalf of council. All the assets have been absorbed into our housings, county housing program. Essentially, it's a shell corporation. But what we do have to do is update our corporate directors. As the county is the sole shareholder, in the past, we have often used social committee members as corporate directors, but since housing corporation is only used as an implement to, only, sorry, used to implement the county housing programs established by the council and doesn't set any policy as itself, staff are suggesting that the senior county officials be used as the directors. So we're suggesting that it would be myself, Kim, and also Kevin Wepler, and that in this case, it would also have the warden and the clerk as directors, voting directors. I just wanted to let you know too, that staff are also in the process of carrying out a review of the usefulness of the housing corporation overall, when it comes to its role within the county. The review might determine that further changes might include dissolving the corporation entirely. This system that is being used that's around the province, there are a number of service managers that are looking at dissolving the corporation simply because of its, of it being a shell corporation, and just adding to sort of that paperwork layer of what we do, which is essentially council's wishes. And that report will be brought to, to council later on this year.
Questions? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Just wondering if you could span, expand on the composition discussion in terms of an opportunity for a member of this council to assist the warden as well, for discussion purposes.
So there is actually, this is our, our council, so for instance, this is what we, who we report to at the time. So essentially, there are no meetings that are held by this group, it is a shell corporation, so all the business comes through council. For instance, my next report will be on the funds that we receive for community homelessness. It'll be determined at the council what we do with those, and then it would be enacted. So essentially, there are no meetings of this council, there's one a year to determine, or one every so often, whenever there's a change in membership, and that's it.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're good? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much. Turning next to the item six I. Need a mover, please. Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Keveney. And you're on.
Great. So this is our annual report for the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. So these are funds that we receive from the province. The funds are used to provide local and client-centered resources and programs to assist in people who might be experiencing homelessness, or those that, or to prevent people from becoming homeless. These dollars are one hundred percent provincial dollars. There is a chart on page fifty-five outlining what we plan to do for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. The funds are twelve-month, from April two thousand and nineteen to March of two thousand and twenty. We do provide a lot of these programs already. They provide services to many residents of Gray County. For instance, our Housing and Related Supports Program, we have four providers that house people that need assistance with medication, laundry, meals. They provide an average of seventy residents of Gray County somewhere to live and somewhere to be supported. We spent around six hundred thousand dollars for that, that service last year. We have our Sustainable Housing Benefit, that provides financial assistance to people in the form of helping them out maybe with last month's rent, so they may be moving to somewhere that's more sustainable for them. We also provided some assistance with utility costs. We know the rising cost of utilities is also a barrier to those that, that have lower income. We look at moving expenses, maybe there might be some rental arrears, and we also provide beds and appliances, because a lot of places do, you know, come without beds and appliances and can be difficult when you're on a fixed budget. We have a number of services that we provide through the Y. The Y provides homelessness prevention and emergency housing services. The Y provided four hundred and six households or persons with some emergency housing last year. They also work with Second Avenue, or sorry, they work with Safe and Sound in order to provide services that are overnight. So for instance, if someone finds themselves at eleven o'clock at night with nowhere to go, they can call the emergency line and they will be directed to a motel. Then the next morning, there will be somebody there from the Y to assist them with what their further housing needs might be. We find that we have a population of people that maybe a couple of nights is all they needed to get them through for, for whatever reason has happened, and then we also have a certain percentage of the population that require more extensive supports. And that's the population that we want to provide some more services to and to maybe have a further look at what we can do. I have put in a hundred thousand dollars for two thousand and nineteen through some transitional housing initiatives. The Housing and Homelessness Plan update that we're doing and all the consultation sessions and focus groups that we're doing are, are pinpointing the fact that there is a certain number of people that do need some of those extended services. We also have a community enhancement program, and that program is, we provide loans, or no, sorry, grants of up to ten thousand dollars to community organizations. It's great, you know, there, it's very hard, Owensound does have a lot of services, but there are some areas that just don't have as much. For instance, we provide funding to Meal on the Hill in Durham, so that there is a place for people to go for a hot meal. Wesleyan Church in Dundalk, they have an excellent program where they provide meals and transportation and maybe some clothing, whatever someone might need. So we're, we're trying to get those services out, out into some of our more rural areas also. One of the things that I did want to comment to is that these are a hundred percent provincial funded. We have not heard yet from the province as to what our funding might be for two thousand and twenty, what those levels might be, and what the future plans might be. We've normally known at least three years in advance to help us do that planning. We're really hoping with the budget coming, maybe end of April, beginning of May, that we'll find out some more information, and that will allow us to do some future planning for the area too.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Thanks for all the work you've done for the people that are in need of housing. Just wondering how you determined where the money's allocated? And whether we're getting the best bang for the buck with that allocation?
So I, I think where the money's allocated, we look at traditionally what services have been working. For instance, our Housing with Related Supports, that's seventy individuals that we support that would, that need that extra support, they would not probably be able to do okay on their own. We know that if that funding wasn't there anymore, then that would be a large gap in our area, and I don't know where those seventy people would go. So we know that that's a, a, a support service that we really need. Homelessness, we know that there are people that do require those emergency services. Things happen that, for some reason, that person may have nowhere to go that night, so we know for a fact that is a service that we need. We look every year at the funds that we receive and what we're hearing from community services as to what some of those gaps are, and certainly rely on our Ten Year Housing and Homelessness Plan to direct us in those areas too. We know that there's still gaps in services that need to be filled, and we're also not the only person. County obviously can't do all of that on our own, we work with our community partners, especially mental health, community partners, hospital, and other institutions in order to work with that.
Good, Mr. Warden. Just one other question. The ten percent administration fee, do we need ten percent to administer, or could some of those dollars be sent back to direct service delivery?
So we do do direct service, uh, service delivery here, so the Sustainable Housing Benefit and a number of programs, even with the Dom Hostels, we're constantly, we get monthly reports and then provide money out, so that money does go towards staffing. We probably have about two and a half staff plus finance that work on all of these projects.
So we need ten percent?
We need ten percent. We do.
Thank you.
You could ask Kevin.
I know, often, you know, eight percent is sometimes an administration fee that's, that's used. Ten percent's on the high end of admin fees.
It is, and a lot of our other programs are five percent, so we are grateful for this one to help, help us with those dollars.
Counselors, so ever?
Just want to confirm, so we've received all this money from the province? It's a hundred percent sure it's in the bank?
We have not received it yet, but we do have a letter. And we receive it normally, we receive it in quarterly payments, and that has been the, the process. There, there has been no word that they are repealing this money for two thousand and nineteen. We've basically been told what we have is ours. I don't know what's coming forward for two thousand and twenty.
Okay, just want to make sure we have a letter.
Checks into mail. Anyone else? Counselor Mackey?
Anne Marie, the Community Enhancement Program, the fifty thousand that we got, we have that goes to community groups, how does a community group apply for that funding?
Certainly. So I wanted to say too, sometimes we do estimates, and for instance, Sustainable Housing Benefit, we used five hundred thousand dollars last year. We've estimated more simply because we never know what the need's going to be. If we have any remaining funds, we add those funds into the Community Enhancement form. If we don't use them, we have to give them back, and we certainly don't want to do that because we know that there's lots of agencies out there that need them. We do put out a call for applications to social service agencies around, usually to community agencies, not social service agencies. And a lot of it is word of mouth. We do have some people that have used it every year. We look at the applications we get and we divide the money up. We don't turn anyone away, as long as they are providing a service for someone that might be at risk of homelessness or experiencing homelessness. If you know of anyone, please direct them our way. But we do, any, all of the services that we know of, that provide services for someone that's homeless, does get an application or a call for applications.
Anne Marie, we have a community outreach group in, you know, the Village of Chatsworth that is comprised of members of various church groups. Do you know if, if they have applied for any of these funds?
Again, it would depend if they were working with people that were needing some homelessness. I know they have not, so we can certainly reach out to them.
All right, thank you.
All right, Anne Marie, putting on my Hanover hat, light on Main Street?
Yes.
Any other questions? I call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much. Turning next to Council Staff Relations Policy, item six K. Heather on deck. I need a mover, please. Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Heather, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. As you are all well aware, changes to the Municipal Act under Bill sixty-eight require that municipalities adopt a number of different policies. Randy brought one forward last time, excuse me, with the tree canopy protection, and the other one is related to council staff relations, and Sandra Shipley will be bringing the one back right after me, on pregnancy and parental leaves. In completing some research, and I thank Jacqueline for doing the research on this, she looked at what other options, what other municipalities are doing with regards to the adoption of a council staff relations policy. Some are developing a brand-new policy. One municipality was just putting a resolution in place, indicating that policies were in place. I think we've gone a step further, and similar to what Randy presented last time, we have a number of really well-developed and supported policies currently in place in Gray County that speak to the ongoing working relationship between council and staff. We have our procedural bylaw. We have our respectful workplace policy. We have our code of conduct, and we have our discrimination and harassment policy. Those are just a few. So similar to what a number of municipalities have done, we are recommending, and that is attached to the report, that the policy be implemented that just continues to support the current policy that we have in place, that continue to, you know, foster that good working relationship between council and Gray County staff members. And it supports that respectful, tolerant, harassment-free environment that we have here. So that's the recommendation, is that the policy be approved that continues to support the policies that we currently have in place.
Questions? I call the question, and all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you, Heather. Turning to item, Sandra, are you right on deck? Yes. Item L, dealing with pregnancy and parental leave, I need a mover, please, to put the item on the table. Counselor Mill, seconded by Counselor Clumpus. Sandra, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To tag on to, to Heather's policy recommendation, one of the other changes that came out of Bill sixty-eight, the modernization of Ontario's municipal legislation, is the requirement for council to... for council to have a policy to deal with pregnancy parental leave for members of council. To my knowledge, we've never had a member of council request a leave for pregnancy or parental leave, but we know the dynamics of council and families are changing, and I think it's great that we're required to have this kind of policy for future members of council or existing members of council should the need arise. So in researching this policy, we contacted many of our eighteen comparators to see what they were recommending or had already, had received approval for. We also searched the Internet just for a variety of other policies that are out there. And what we found is that municipalities were either recommending compensation, no compensation for this type of leave, a partial compensation, or full compensation for the leave. Unfortunately, we don't have the background for their rationale as to why they went with a particular option. So we took a step back and looked at, a lot of municipalities are trying to tie their council cost of living increases, et cetera, with their non-union group. And that's the approach we decided to bring forward for council's consideration. So currently, non-union employees, when they are off on pregnancy or parental leave, they are only compensated through Service Canada in EI Special Benefits, which is fifty-five percent of their normal weekly salary, but it's capped at the employment insurance maximum that is sent by, that is set annually by Revenue Canada. So on page two of the report, you can see some examples there of if a member of council in two thousand and eighteen went off on pregnancy or parental leave, what the compensation level would be. The policy, the draft policy attached talks about giving notice to take the type of leave that the member of council has their full right to fully participate or not participate in council business during their leave, and direction that if they elect to step back in and step back out, it doesn't change the length of their twenty weeks. The Municipal Act says that those twenty weeks have to be consecutive weeks.
Anyone? I call the question, then. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Did that go too quickly? I'm seeing some faces that look a little... No? We're good? Thank you. Six M, year-end transfers. Kevin?
Looking, Rob.
I'm looking for a mover, please. Put the item on the table. Counselor Millen, seconded by Counselor Carlton. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. This is an annual report I present here, and the purpose of this report is to provide information to council on our estimated year-end surplus deficit by our functional areas, and also to provide staff with the authority to make year-end adjustments necessary to meet, to finalize the county's two thousand and eighteen financials, and also to meet what our auditors are looking for when they review all these transfers that we, staff has given that authority to make those entries. So what I've done here is, I'm going to kind of walk through a few of the tables. The first on the summary is by our functional areas, I'm, we're projecting a surplus of just about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. There's some, I did attach the September's update. Not a lot has changed from that update. There's a few things that have changed a little bit, but overall, the comments that were put into that background were there, so we're close. We reported it September, we thought it'd be about a hundred and seventy-two thousand, so we're off a little bit. In that, in doing that, there was, the one unplanned item was the acquisition of the Sidney Hub, and what we're, what I'm proposing with the surplus and deficit entries is to fund that, purchase from that, and not draw upon other reserves that will use those surpluses that we've been fortunate to see this year. On the page eighty-two of the packages, then I'm recommending, okay, of that three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars in surplus, how I'm, where I'm recommending those go towards and what they're to fund. And there's a number of what we call, you'll see in there in that table on page eighty-two, what we call a one-time funding reserve. And we call it that, and it's like a taxation stabilization reserve. So it's a place if we had something that come up on us that we could go, or if it was a one-time item that we would utilize and stuff. In this, you'll see in the estimated to-from reserve, those that are negative, those are shortfalls that we are trying to fund from that one-time reserve. So under the corporate services there, that the, between the weekly indemnity and WSIB, that shortfall was twenty-three-three. We have a reserve for the WSIB, so we're requesting that that would be drawn from that reserve. The balance, I'm saying, is going to that one-time funding reserve then in order to fund the shortfall for the acquisition of the Sidney Campus, as well as to assist with our forestry revenue deficit and deficit we're seeing in paramedic services. The other items then are that we have requested to be moved to their specific reserves where we feel there's a need, and to continue with those capital reserves or those operating reserves that staff require. And then after that, then there's what, on page eighty-four is what we call non-budgeted transfers to and from reserve. And I should, I should state, too, on our surplus deficit projection, there was items that were included in the two thousand and nineteen budget that we're using, that were projects that we did not start or did not complete, or for certain reasons were moving forward to two thousand and nineteen that were funded from taxation. You would have seen those in the two thousand and nineteen budget from reserve. This here is the mechanism now. I've got to get authority to move them to those reserves so that you actually have that for the two thousand and nineteen budget, okay? An example of that was on the Integrity Commissioner, the first item on this list was, we budgeted twenty-five thousand again for the Integrity Commissioner in two thousand and nineteen, but based on the usage we had in two thousand and eighteen, I recommended in the nineteen budget that we show seventeen thousand of the unused funding from eighteen to be used then from reserve, and for just a year again to see if that is a true picture of what we're going to utilize in that Integrity Commissioner and stuff. So there's a number of items like that, that projects for certain reasons didn't move forward, that were built into the nineteen budget. So that column, that project funding to reserve transfer amount, that is the taxation amount that was in the eighteen budget, then I need to move forward to the reserve. It doesn't exist in the current reserve. If it was already in reserve and the project didn't move forward, we would just budget in nineteen from reserve and show the project expenditure. But this case where we're showing from reserve, I need to get it there. So the, there's a number there. There's a two million dollar amount there. That is the reserve proceeds that we got from Golden Town when we took over that housing. That happened about September, I believe it was. The other big item in this was the construction job in Durham that due to unforeseen circumstances, there was five hundred and twenty-five thousand in taxation for that project, and it's been delayed, so it's been rebudgeted in nineteen. So again, this is trying to move that taxation money forward, so that reserve funding there is there then for further use in nineteen. All these items were taken out of consideration on the surplus, so that, so these items here that I'm saying were taxation to remove, those have been considered in and before that calculation of the three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars in surplus, okay? And then the last items in the report are, we get donations for specific items, so there's people that make donations at times in our long-term care facility. Those go for a specific purpose to benefit the residents of those long-term care homes. We get, Gray Roots gets donations for projects that they've undertaken. And there's, for the economic development for the Sidney Hub, we've been given donations there for specifics for that operation once it gets up and going. So those are listed here in the amounts, and again, that's to give us authority to transfer those to those reserves, and then when those are required, that'd be either a report or be built into a future budget. The other, last item is the self-financed venture project, which was at the new paramedic station in Chatsworth. And when we built the budget, we anticipated that project would have been finalized. It was not finalized, and there's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars that we need to be carried forward in that venture revenue into the nineteen budget to cover off that expense that's going to hit our two thousand and nineteen expenditures. So that, I can try to answer more specifics. Like I said, I included the September update to try to give some background on where the surplus and deficits were happening and occurring, but I could, or if you need further clarification on this, I'll try my best.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions? I see none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for passing the budget bylaw today. Appreciate it.
Okay. Item six N, on the Swift project. Kim, I guess, get somebody to put it on the table, first of all. Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Patterson.
Thanks very much. So counsel, further to some recent discussions that we've had, the, we are still, all of Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, working to see the Swift project come to fruition and have a signed agreement so that that project can move forward with the projects as envisioned. One of the things that the province had asked is that consideration be given by the caucus to changing the composition of the board. What they wanted to see was that elected officials were all represented on that Swift board, and that, you know, that public money was being spent so that elected officials were actually seen to be in control of the Swift project. So they've asked to change the composition of the board so that each participating municipality has an elected official. And in our case, what we're asking here is that Warden Hicks be appointed as Gray County's Western Ontario Wardens Caucus representative to the Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology Board of Directors. There's an AGM coming up at the beginning of March where all of these pieces will be put together and properly voted on, and the project can move forward from there. I have some other correspondence. I can try and respond to any questions, but really, that's the sum of it. We need an elected representative from Gray County, and we're suggesting that Warden Hicks, who's agreed to fill that position, be our representative.
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I certainly support you participating on the Swift board, but it's never been my experience that adding more people to a board would expedite any kind of decision. So going from fifteen to twenty-five, in my mind, is ludicrous. And I'm not surprised that the province would support this. In my mind, you should be going the other way and cutting the number of board members in half, because the Wardens Caucus will still, I would think, have sufficient influence over that board, if not direct control, of course, but they'll have sufficient influence over the project. I support the motion, but I just, this notion of going to twenty-five in a board is, no, I won't say it.
You want to respond to that?
I can only say that there was a great deal of, I think, consultation and discussion with the province. This was essentially their direction, and we're all very anxious to move forward.
So if we want to move forward, this is what we do, is what you're hearing. Any other questions? Any other discussion? And I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. And we're going to go back to item five A. Counselor Desai, would you like to move?
Yes.
Put note, just one sec, just to move.
I'll do, yes.
Yes, and seconded by, I need, Counselor Mackey. Thank you very much. Counselor Desai, you had questions?
Yes. So the item in question is a correspondent from the Owen Sound Housing Company Limited.
Yes.
My question was, do they have a date for the event?
Oh, great.
And how will, are we directing staff to respond in a certain way?
So they don't have a date yet. They want to have occupancy by May first, so I'm assuming it'll happen sometime before people move in, so in April. But I can keep you definitely informed, and I'm sure that there'll probably be an invitation come out to whoever wants to attend. I know I'll certainly be attending.
Any other questions? Then on the motion to receive the correspondence, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Are we actually done?
Other business?
Yes, is there any other business? Do we have to, Counselor McQueen, maybe you can just formally indicate that you intend to bring a motion?
Yep. With a notice? Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kind of counsel, seeing the overall response time for paramedic services for Gray Highlands are consistently lower than other lower-tier municipalities within the county of Gray, therefore, an initial meeting be set up with Gray County and Gray Highlands staff and elected officials to consider future enhancements when our next system improvement occurs. And I can work with Ms. Morrison on that.
Okay. Any other notices of motion? Okay, we're, before I call for the, oh, am I missing something?
No, we had his hand up to it, you're in.
Oh. I just want to say, we're ending a little early, but I would encourage everyone not to think that this is always going to happen. I made the mistake in the past of guessing that it might end a little early and scheduling appointments and that sort of thing. I would encourage all council members to leave the day free because there will be those times when we will need you to be here, and so I would just say, don't schedule things on council days. Now, Counselor Millen, motion to adjourn. Do we need a second? I don't think so. We do? Okay. Counselor Burley, you got in second place this time. He beat you to it. Thank you, everyone.